Good evening, everyone. Today is March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is the meeting of the Northborough Planning Board. This open meeting of the Northborough Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three. An act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the planning board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the planning board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. This meeting will feature public comments. Um, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Brad Blanchett?
Here.
Anthony, are you there? Guess he's not there yet. Um, Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here.
And Bob Federico?
Here.
Okay, and, uh, Chair, ground rules, um, the Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name. We have no applicants tonight. And, um, each vote taken by the Board of Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. It's now six oh four, and I'll call the meeting to order. The first on our agenda is the continued public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law Forty-Eight, Section Five, on proposed amendments to the following sections of the Northborough zoning bylaw. Um, Section seven oh two of our own. I guess I probably don't have to read them all. They're on the agenda. But these are the warrant articles that we're gonna be discussing for town meeting. Um, we had a couple comments by Attorney Aikman, and Lori, do you wanna speak to those?
Uh, sure, I can speak to those. Um, I do have the version of the zoning bylaws that I just sent to you this afternoon. Would you prefer? Uh, those are up and ready to go. I can share my screen, or would you prefer I speak to John Aikman's comments? So the version I sent today includes his comments.
So you might as well pull those up and we'll just speak to the latest.
Alrighty. Okay. So, um, one of the first comments that he made uh, had to do with originally, uh, we were doing a definition of dwelling. So in our zoning bylaw today, we have a definition for dwelling. So what we were proposing to do is, uh, just alter the definition to comply with the state. His comment was that because the state definition says dwelling unit, we should say dwelling unit as well. So that seemed simple enough, so I just made that modification. Any questions about that?
Nope.
I'm having trouble scrolling. Hold on. Uh, there we go. Uh, so then the next comment had to do with, um, uh, it had to do with, uh, changing the reference to under site plans, um, which I agreed with. He suggested, uh, originally I had this listed under A. So, uh, through, uh, subsection three A, and he suggested just creating a standalone, uh, bullet E where I'm calling out construction or installation of a detached accessory dwelling unit by itself instead of combining it with, uh, A, which said any use or activity listed under subsection A one or two of this section that does not meet the minimum threshold for site plan approval by the planning board or a site plan special permit. So I agreed with him, uh, that that would be less confusing by making it a standalone bullet.
Lauren, I've got a question. Um, some people have been asking me, can I construct an accessory dwelling unit onto an existing accessory structure? Like a barn or something like that? Um, and I said, I wanna see why not, but you may have to go to the board. Would that fall under this? Because, um, an attached accessory dwelling unit could be either attached to the main residence of the house, or it could be attached to an existing accessory structure like a barn or garage or something like that.
So in my, um, so my intent when I wrote this is that that would not trigger uh, minor site plan review. What would trigger minor site plan review is if they were building a new two-car garage, and then they were putting an accessory dwelling above it.
Okay, but if they had an existing two-car garage, and they wanted to add on to it for an ADU, they would not need this?
No.
Okay.
Would think they would. You don't, you don't think they should?
Well, my rationale is that oftentimes when you have a detached two-car garage, you have a space above the garage that people usually use as like a family space or for storage purposes. So a lot of times what they're doing is they're converting that space into an in-law apartment, but they're not actually changing the exterior of the building at all. So that's, uh, typically what I have seen with, um, in-law apartments. Uh, when you're dealing with an existing two-car garage.
See that, but the way I hear Bob saying it, do you mean Bob like, say there's a barn and they're attaching a structure to the side, front, or back of it?
I, I guess my, my point would be if you take a look at the one that was done on, uh, Summer Street. It is, it's a, it's a, basically it's a standalone, but it's attached to a existing barn, if you will. Um, and since there's no definition of what is an attachment, um, they literally ran some two-by-eights across to make something like a pergola, which bridges the two buildings, therefore it's attached. Um, and, and I guess my question is, would with this particular, um, parentheses E line, um, bring this into, uh, into discussion?
In my opinion, no, because that is the status quo. So right now, if you have a detached, um, if you have an accessory structure like a barn or a two-car garage, and you're attaching an accessory dwelling to it, you do not have to go through any s- form of site plan review today. So why would we require it in the future? Whereas if you are constructing a new detached structure, so whether it's a standalone accessory dwelling, or whether it's a two-car garage, accessory dwelling combo, or a barn accessory dwelling combo, then, uh, that is something that's brand new. That's something that wouldn't be allowed today. So that should, uh, require a little bit more oversight.
Yes, cuz I was reading all those emails with the other town today, and they do say that it's attached or inside, if it's attached or inside of the principal dwelling. But if it's attached to a detached accessory structure, to me, I feel like that would mean minor site plan review by you guys. Because if you're attaching it to the principal dwelling, then you already have all the electricity and utilities. Whereas if you're a standalone accessory structure, and now you're making it into a living unit, to me, I feel like that would need minor site plan review.
I mean, we can change that. That's not the way I envisioned it because that's not what's required today. And today, we do allow accessory dwellings to be attached to accessory structures with no form of site plan review. So, um, you know, that would be more than what's currently allowed. And in my experience, so I've had a good deal of experi- experience with accessory dwellings over the course of my career. And a common um, a common way of doing an accessory dwelling is just what I said. So you have a two-car garage with a room above a garage, and people want to convert that into an accessory dwelling. Or you have a large barn that exists on the parcel, and people wanna put an accessory dwelling in the barn. And in those circumstances, there's no exterior work. So it doesn't impact the look of the accessory structure in any way. Whereas if you're building something new, like you're building a new barn, then, uh, you know, that's a change to the neighborhood. A new two-car garage with an accessory dwelling, that's a change change to what currently exists.
I can see your point if it's inside, like you're saying, if it's above the garage or it's in the barn. But I feel like the way Bob's saying it is it's attached to the side of it, which I feel is different. Cuz anyone can have an old, like, shed, and now they're gonna attach to it and say, well, this is an accessory dwelling now. And I feel that's a whole different look than being inside of the barn or inside of the garage or.
Well, if you're attaching it to the garage, then chances are you're going into the backyard. So the look from the street is maintained. It's the same.
My main thing is that it gets all the review from the development team that it would if it was a detached structure. I mean, I think if it's inside, then it's not as big of a deal, but if it's outside, attached to it.
Well, we can change the language if you want.
Yeah, I mean, me just being new to this board, um, I would like to see some sort of review if there is any change to the structure. I know we got the question at the last meeting about putting a, a structure in the front of the property. Um, so even though the garage itself is already there, I mean, there's, I think it leaves a lot of room for interpretation, um, on the developer. And if we just have something to kinda give it some oversight, so people aren't taking advantage of, of our bylaws.
I'd agree. It, it warrants, uh, a little bit closer look if they're doing something like that.
Okay, I'll, I'll think about how best to alter the language. I can't really think of the wording right off the top of my head, but I will, uh, ponder that and come up with a change.
Have you gotten many applications?
I haven't gotten any applications, but I've had a lot of questions. You know, and I, and I've been telling them to, what their best bet, because twenty twenty-five is gonna, was, is gonna experience three different sets of ADU regulations. One was our old set, one is the current set under the state, and the third set is going to be, um, you know, hopefully passed at the town meeting in, um, April. I said, your best bet is to just wait until April. You know, get the designs going, stuff like that, but, you know, just jumping back and forth between codes is, is really, really awkward. And I've been telling people, you know, if you can't hold off a little bit, uh, until this is, until more of the dust has settled out. Because each one of the three that we've experiencing this year has slightly different issues, but there are actually big hurdles if, if you're not careful.
Right.
So I've been, I've been, I've been telling people what's been going on, informing them of where they can go to get information, you know, these drafts that we're looking at. Uh, this is the way we're kinda hoping things are gonna go, um, at the town meeting. Um, so I've, I'm kinda deferring people to, to these, you know, to, to start thinking in this direction. You know, but we do have a separate, in our permitting system, we do have a separate permit just for an ADU, because there's so much wrapped around it. You know, besides the building code. So there's a lot of checks and acknowledgements that they have to sign on to, um, when they, when they do an ADU.
All right. So there are a number of changes, uh, that he suggested to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Um, so of course, what I tried to do was to fit the definition, the state's definition within the structure of our accessory dwelling bylaw as it appeared in the use definitions. And, uh, he didn't really like what I had done. So he suggested just going word for word with the state definition. Uh, so I modified the language, um, so that it complies completely with the state definition. And then he recommended, uh, because of course there are a number of definitions that the state added. Um, so rather than list all of those various definitions, he suggested adding this sentence right here, the definition set forth in seven sixty, uh, CMR seventy-one. Um, so that's a way we can get around listing all of those. Um, let's see. Then uh, he had also suggested kind of, um, putting, so if you may recall, at the last public hearing, there was concern about, well, what if you have the circumstance where you have a single-family home that's located a hundred feet off of the roadway? Why do you care if the accessory dwelling is in front of the structure or not? Um, so we changed the wording, so it says, where feasible, a detached accessory dwelling shall be located to the rear or side of the principal dwelling and shall be set back a minimum of ten feet from other buildings on the lot. So it's kinda like the should language that we had soft- softened our shalls with um, in prior versions of this bylaw. So in a few locations, he had suggested where feasible. Um, so I went ahead and included that. So, uh, under C, where feasible, and then the last phrase is to the extent feasible. Um, so then we did receive a letter from DPW Director Scott Chaplin Tier. He had wanted, uh, specific lang- uh, geez. My mouse died, so I'm trying to use my do this without a mouse, which is always a challenge for me on a laptop. So letter F, um, I included his new language. He wanted some specificity, uh, specificity put into the bylaw having to do with the water meter and the water service and the sewer service. So it, the language seems, uh, like it would not conflict with the state. So I went ahead and included that, but of course I'll send it to John for his ultimate approval. Uh, but any questions about this new red language? So letter F and letter G?
No, I actually just had the question about the where feasible cuz it seemed pretty vague to me and, and pretty loose for interpretation, but it, it basically says where, where it can be done, it should be here, or it shall be here. Um, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
And then letter I, um, this was something that Amy emailed to me earlier today, and I quickly shot it off to, uh, John Aikman to see if it'd be okay. Um, I think this was a question that came out of the public hearing session last time about the ownership and whether they could, uh, condo-wise and sell off the accessory dwelling separate from the single-family home. And in this case, uh, if we include this language, that won't be possible.
Where, where are you on the?
Letter I. So I got my.
Oh, down there, okay. Got it. Okay, thank you. This morning, I started reviewing other towns that are going to town meeting. There were a couple of towns going to town meeting this week, so I read their bylaws. And, um, they had this type of a statement, which is why I shouted off to Lori and said, do you think we need something like this?
I think it definitely clarifies things, so I, I think it's a good idea to include it.
Interesting, yeah.
So then the next one, uh, he also had a suggestion to delete um, the last sentence under this paragraph right here. Uh, so originally, the sentence said, provisions of this section shall not apply to lots shown on a plan and part of an application for a special permit or subdivision, the application for which has been duly filed as required by the zoning bylaw or the Mass General laws before the first publication of notice of the public hearing on such amendment required by Mass General law, et cetera. So his comment was, per our discussion, I recommend deleting the sentence indicated as unnecessary. There is no need to exempt lots shown on a subdivision or A and R filed before this bylaw is approved. Um, a gen- Mass General law already exempts those lots from zoning changes if the plans are ultimately approved. The proposed exemption for new lots shown on a special permit application would only apply to applications presently on file with the town. And I understand that there are no such applications, so I went ahead and did what he said and deleted that. Now, the next one, I have that in red, um, just as a reminder to, um, talk to you about it. So John's comment was, the new zoning act amendment protecting some lots from merger applies by its terms and provides a minimum level of protection that the town cannot restrict. It is not clear exactly how the various provisions of the state law concerning merger will be interpreted going forward, but the clear intent of the law is to expand availability of buildable lots. I recommend that you delay adopting bylaws addressing, addressing lot merger until the application of the state law is better understood.
So you're saying just to take it off for this year?
Yeah, so what he's saying is that the state really provided no guidance on, uh, how we should deal with this change to the law. So i- his suggestion, uh, and we talked about it more on the telephone, is that just get rid of it. Chances are, there's gonna be a rare case that comes up. Um, and then you'll just have to deal with it at the time. But chances are, there's going to be litigation that comes out of this. And, uh, there'll be more clarity going forward as to how we're supposed to deal with it. Uh, just so you know, I did send this to, um, Margaret Hurley from the Attorney General's Office uh, for her to review our language and provide feedback. I haven't heard anything from her yet. So maybe this is something, um, that we might kick the can in hopes that she gets back to us before our next meeting.
I actually thought this one was a little complicated to try to understand and then explain to uh, you know, an audience of people that are gonna probably not wrap their head around it. I don't think it's well instructed.
Did, Millie, the, the original law back in nineteen eighty-one that started this whole merger business?
Yeah.
Just as confusing and nobody knew it back then. So to take something that's difficult to understand and unwrap it so that people can understand it? It's impossible.
Right. I know, I, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, what, what we were trying to do here is to make it more understandable so that we would know how to apply it. Um, but, eh, yeah, I mean, and maybe we fell short in doing that.
Well, I, and, but I don't know if there was, would have been any other way. I mean, I had a lot of questions on it because it wasn't worded clearly to me, so.
Yes, uh, the law itself was very confusing to me as well. So, so maybe we can, uh, unless anybody has any other comments about it, maybe we can kinda just jump over it and figure out at the next meeting what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah, I just assume just remove it. If it's gonna be that confusing and, you know, even the attorneys are saying that there are gonna be lawsuits under this, I don't think it's worth, worth our time.
Okay, do you want me to just remove it now?
I, I, I think that that would probably be okay. It would be okay with me.
Yep. Yeah, that'd be okay with me.
Dokey. Done.
So if it's removed and, um, someone comes forward, you just follow what the state is is stating?
Yeah, so I guess, uh, what Bob will have to do is they apply for a building permit. And he'll just have to, um, have to look to see if it's ten thousand square feet of area, seventy-five feet of frontage, and then they'll, he'll have to tell them, okay, you know, it's in our, it's in one of our residential districts, so you're gonna have to build a single-family. It's gonna have to be this size, and you need to have three bedrooms in it. At least.
Yep, we'll, we'll burn that bridge when we get to it.
Fun, fun.
I mean, I, I agree with putting in these limitations, but the, I think the attorney has a good point. Like I've said before, this is kinda like the Dover Amendment where the government throws it out there and lets the courts decide how this actually, what it actually looks like. And, you know, we, this, this might be a little premature. You know, because this, this, this unmergering of lots is it's complicated. It takes a land use wizard to understand it.
Yeah.
Both directions and, um, you know, there's, there's, there's gonna be a lot of what-ifs. Can I do this? Well, how about if I do this? How about if I try that? Um, it's, I think, I think it's probably a good idea to wait on it. But I wouldn't trash it altogether. I might come back next year and just put it back in.
All right, so moving on, uh, the next one, land clearing and grading. Uh, he just had a little bit of wordsmithing, uh, in this sentence right here. So he wanted me to add to add uh, the underlying text as set forth below. Uh, my language was a little bit different as far as that phrase is concerned, so I went with his language. And then.
We're adding that because it's already being reviewed by an engineer? Is that why it's okay that they're doing it?
Yeah, so the, the reason is that, um, our bylaw having to do with, uh, grading is much less comprehensive than the new stormwater management and land disturbance permit. So you, you may remember, we were talking about this with the reservoir comment. Yeah, so our bylaw is four pages long and, uh, the conservation commission's bylaw and regulations are thirty-three pages long. And there's nothing that is left out from our bylaw, so right now it's redundant, and it really isn't fair to make people go to two different permitting entities for the same exact activity, in my opinion.
Yeah, and that's what I was, I thought, but I just wanna make sure.
Yep. So then we move on to the sign bylaw, and I think he only had one small change. Uh, let me move on to that. So the only thing I changed had to do with, it's a number four here. Flashing, moving, and animated signs and signs designed to attract the eye by intermittent or repeated motions are prohibited. Um, so the only thing that I changed is originally it said flashing, moving and to animated signs. Flashing, moving, and animated signs designed to attract the eye. So, I, I, eh, eh, he just said it was confusing, so we added an extra comma. Put signs here and added signs here. Um, and then this is something I wanted to talk to you about. Under construction and maintenance of signs. I know we talked about this quite a bit with design review. I know we talked about this quite a bit with design review. Uh, number two, no sign shall be painted or posted directly on the exterior surface of any wall except glazing. Now, he put a comment said saying, consider defining the word glazing.
Hmm.
Well, I Googled glazing and to me, it looked like it was pretty clear that we're talking about glass. But uh, oh, what are your thoughts? Do you think that we should further define it, or do you think that the Webster dictionary, I can actually pull it up?
So are you basically saying no sign shall be posted or painted unless it's glass?
So yeah, uh, so originally we had quite a bit of discussion about um, where these window signs would be. And uh, you know, originally it says including windows and doors. So that was actually Bob's recommendation to change it from windows and doors to glazing. So maybe you wanna explain that a little more, Bob.
In certain circumstances, you can have a sidewall of a wall that is made out of glass. Um, and glazing basically encompasses all types of glass surfaces. Whether it's a skylight, a window on a door, a window on the side of the door, the window itself, you know, um, um, and and actually in all the building codes, it doesn't necessarily talk about windows, it talks about glazing, which would be any um, glass or transparent surface, uh, including plexiglass.
So it could be posted directly on the windows or doors, on the glass part?
On the glass part, yeah. I mean, well, basically it says signs cannot be painted on the outside of any wall. So if you've got a brick wall on your building, you can't paint the sign directly on it. You know, kinda like the big murals in Worcester and things like that. You can't have a sign that's painted directly on the brick wall. It has to be on some sort of a backing material that's attached to the wall.
Okay.
And this and the instance for glazing, you can you can paint right on the glass surface itself.
Came about is because we allowed window signs. In the past, there were no window signs allowed. So it said no s- signs shall be painted or posted, and it said including windows and doors. So we were trying to decide how to update this, so it allows the sign on the window.
Got it.
So uh, the definition for in the Merriam-Webster dictionary is glasswork. And then there's another definition that says transparent material such as glass used for windows. So are we satisfied with the mainstream de- definition, or do you think we need to define it?
I'm I'm okay with that.
Um, then another minor change, he suggested she uh, here. Uh, he wanted us to specify one directory. And he said one window sign, but I did not agree with that, so I did not specify one window sign because there may be several window signs. Um, so each business establishment shall be allowed one directory and window signs and not more than two of the following types of signs, wall, projecting blade, freestanding or on a any questions about that? And I think that does it for signs. Yep, no more. So then.
Can we just go back to the the three, the number three, the wall signs? Um, just listed the at the bottom of that page. Uh, can you just clarify what that actually is getting to? Because it's a like, for me, again, it's a little confusing. It looked it says in the case of a sign perpendicular to to the wall, it show it shouldn't stick out more than six feet. That seems an odd like you're having a wall, a a sign stuck out six feet from a wall perpendicularly?
Uh, so that has to do with a projecting sign.
Oh. Well, yeah, but a projecting sign meaning sticking out.
Right.
So can you give me an example of what that looks like?
Um, sure.
I mean, six feet seems like a law, a big bit of a jut out.
This was actually part of the bylaw already, and we moved it from a location to this because it was a section called location and it had three parts to it. But those parts, it was buried so deep that nobody ever saw them, so we took out those three pieces and put them in different places. But this one, this one's one of them.
So I I'm still having a hard time envisioning what that six-foot projected sign, you mean like a hanging sign could be six feet out from a wall?
But let me, I I just uh, clicked on the images of projecting signs, so here's a variety of projecting signs.
Okay, oh, okay.
So you can see that there is often hardware.
Yep, yep.
It attaches to the wall itself and then the projecting sign goes from there. So a lot of times it's like decorative hardware, these aren't like the alpha, alpha structural.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I I get I think I get it now. I I wasn't sure if you meant like projecting, like light projecting or, you know, substantial structure projecting or but okay, I get it.
Do you think somewhere else in the bylaw, it says it can't go over the road, right? So if the sidewalk is only four feet, it's only gonna go over the four feet of the sidewalk. It can't jet out into the street where a truck will hit it.
Well, that's kinda what I was trying to envision is.
Yeah, we did have lots of debate, Bob and I about um, gosh, let's see where it is.
Okay.
Um.
Signs shown.
Going over public property. Uh, do you remember where it is in the bylaw, Bob?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, so not going over public property, meaning it can't actually even go over a sidewalk?
Well, that was my question.
Yeah, that that I had a problem with that because oftentimes buildings are are constructed right to the sidewalk edge, so it's within the uh, right of way, so the sidewalk itself is within the roadway right of way.
Hmm.
And if the building is right up against um, the road right of way, then usually that is when you need a projecting sign because the building is so close to the sidewalk that if you don't have a projecting sign, nobody can figure out. They can't read the sign that's flat up against the wall.
Right, right, okay.
So there are many downtown locations, especially in historic downtowns where they allow projecting signs to project over the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, uh, so we altered the language, so it doesn't say that anymore. It does allow you to to do a projecting sign over the public right of way.
Would there need to be a height criteria on that or not?
Just we do have a height criteria.
I saw something that said not to exceed the height, but.
It's ten feet. That we are sixteen above, so let me show you what that is.
I mean, I was just looking for really for an example of what that sign would look like. I thought it was more of a light projecting sign, wasn't sure.
Okay, so here we go, sixteen. All right, uh, projecting blade signs are subject to a minimum height requirement at ten feet up uh, from the grade level to the bottom of the sign.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. So now the inclusionary.
Says shall not extend over a walkway more than two-thirds.
Yes.
Okay.
So now, uh, the rental housing. So John Eichman and I had like an hour and a half phone conversation yesterday uh, to discuss some of the comments that he made on the inclusionary zoning bylaw. And I was trying to provide some clarity um, as to what we were trying to accomplish. And he was uh, suggesting some alternative language, which I then incorporated. Uh, so what I was looking for for from him was verification that I captured it uh, correctly um, in his interpretation, so unfortunately he wasn't able to get back to me by this meeting. So uh, there may be some additional tweaks going forward. But uh, one of the comments that he made, starting under applicability is he uh, he made a comment. The word uh, project is capitalized but not defined. A definition should be added that if that was the intention, otherwise eliminate the capitalization. So I changed the configuration of this paragraph a little bit so that I'm defining what a project is. So the the project are these three various options.
Mm-hmm.
Question. Can we use a different word than project? Cause when I, you know how they used to call housing developments the projects? So I'm wondering if like someone would read this and and take it negatively, like that we're calling affordable housing the projects, you know? Like I noticed in in another bylaw I read, they called it like a housing development or so it say shall apply to any housing development. And then a housing development shall consist of the following. Like, I don't know, when I first read project, I was like, I don't want people to think it, we're calling it the projects.
Yeah, it's a good call. The uh, what you just described, the housing development is more inclusive of any type of housing project.
Would you be okay if I shortened it with development?
I would.
Sure.
Yeah, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I will do that? Uh, let's see, okay. All right, another thing we discussed, uh, number two for a long time. Because his concern was um, originally we had the words occupancy permit or from issuance of an occupancy permit. So then his question was, well, what occupancy permit are you talking about? You know, if we're talking about an A and R development, then are you talking about the first occupancy permit or the ninth occupancy permit? So he thought that it would be much clearer and easier to track for the town if we specified from issuance of a new construction residential building permit. So that would be the first one. So in the case of um, you know, a hundred unit developments that has ten different buildings, then the clock would start at the issuance of the first building permit for the first building. Okay? Are you guys okay with that?
Yep.
All right. Uh, let's see. Okay, then we also spent a lot of time talking about what we're gonna call this permit. So his suggestion, because a lot of these projects are already triggering a special permit, whether it's for assisted living or multifamily or mixed use, there's a special permit. And then also they're triggering site plan approval because pretty much any project that um, it requires a significant development that's not single family also triggers site plan approval. And then, of course, you have definitive subdivision approval. So his suggestion was let's just call it an inclusionary housing permit. It'll make it much easier for everybody to understand which permit we're talking about. And then he said that you can't apply a special permit for uses that are by right, like single family homes are by right uses. So you can't then make the affordability aspect of it be a special permit. Um, so this language, um, I I pretty much highlighted the entire paragraph. So uh, what it says in a nutshell is that uh, in instances where it's a by right use, uh, so like single family homes, a subdivision, if it's an open space community, then or if it's a special permit use that is under the jurisdiction of the planning board, then the planning board is the permit granting authority. If it is a special permit use that the ZBA issues, then the ZBA is the inclusionary housing permit granting authority.
Now, there won't be any extra fee for this, will there? You know how like our special permit, when they go for it, there's a fee?
Um, if you don't want there to be a fee, then uh, we don't assign a fee. If you want there to be a fee, then we will.
I don't think there should be.
Right, cause I think they're doing the town, you know, favor by doing the affordable housing. So you hate to charge them a fee and then ask them to do the affordable housing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I made a note about that. So then wherever I said before special permit granting authority, I have now changed it to permit granting authority. Um, so then another thing that I changed is uh, he thought it was too confusing for us to include the special uses that are gonna be allowed within an inclusionary housing development in with density bonus, cause he's like, well, it's not really a density bonus. It's a bonus that you're allowing them flexibility of uses, but it's not a density bonus. So he wanted me to uh, make a separate heading. Um, so I just went along with uh, what it was called in the MBTA bylaw, the MDOD. We just called it use regulations. So you will notice this table. Uh, the things that are highlighted in red is because originally uh, what I had done is I had said like the the Board of Appeals would be the permit granting authority for all cottage dwellings. And then um, for two family dwellings, I always made the planning board the special permit of granting authority. But then when I was looking at a specific project, so say uh, we have a development that is proposed within the RC district. Um, it doesn't make sense. So if they're exercising this option to do different housing types, it doesn't make sense that they would go to the planning board for the vast majority for the special permits, I plan approval and everything else. But then they'd have to file a special approval for like one cottage dwelling within a development. So what I did is I streamlined by district. Um, so in the R date RA district, it's always the planning board, the special permit granting authority. So pretty much the residential districts, it's always the planning board. And in the business districts, it's always the uh, Board of Appeals, so that coincides with the use chart.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
So you're good with that?
Hmm.
Yep.
All right, so then now the density bonus is a standalone section. So this is where we're talking about uh, how many bonus units you get. Uh, so Amy, I know that this is something that you wanted. So originally the way we we've been going back and forth. So originally, I said that uh, if you wanted to do a density bonus, that it would be by site plan approval. So you wouldn't need extra consideration. It wouldn't be a special permit in order to vary the dimensional requirements and to get the two bonus units. Um, now I know Amy at the last meeting, you had discussed that you really wanted it to be by special permit. So I included the special permit language. Um, but I just was looking for verification from the board that this is what you want. So when you make something by special permit, understand that it's an inherent disadvantage to do. Um, so you're making it harder for somebody to to wanna go this route because it's discretionary. But if that's uh what you folks want, then I will make it by special permit.
Way I read it in all the other towns, that's where it was. The density bonus was a special permit. Like the whole, the rest of the bylaw could have been by right if they don't want the density bonus. But when you're asking for a density bonus and changes in the setbacks or changes in the dimensional requirements, then I think it needs a special permit.
Have you ever had anything like a density bonus in this town before? Do you know? Does anybody know?
Um, possibly in the open space. I'd have to look. Uh, the open.
Might be in the open space, but they've, no one's ever done it.
Well, that's the thing. So I I'm I'm curious as to whether or not maybe we could have it for now by special permit, cause we really haven't gone through the process of it. And then maybe adopt it if in a couple of years, it just doesn't seem to be a necessary uh um element.
Some towns don't even allow density bonuses and some do. And the ones that do allow it by special permit. But Lori said they're more apt to do the affordable housing if you give a density bonus.
Right. So it's that little bit of a carrot. But if we haven't really ever gone, if we haven't gone through that process before, we may not know really what to expect about how to do it. It just, I don't think it's too complicated at the same time. You know, if we find in a couple of years that it's really not a big deal and and we shouldn't really need to have special permit for it, change it to uh just by right.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Um, especially Amy, you've done the research and that's what other towns are doing. So I think this is a great way to start. And like you said, Millie, if nothing comes of it, then we can remove it in a couple of years.
I just think it it allows, it it protects the town a little bit.
Yeah.
Scrutiny on on these projects when they come up.
Yeah, I'm just, I I'm just a little concerned that, you know, we're trying to get people to build affordable units, right? And you know, this sort of makes it sound like we're not.
You look at like Westboro, Hopkinton and all the other surrounding towns, none of them even allow a density bonus. So we're even, we're one step ahead of them. We're saying, okay, you can come in front of us. But we're gonna go through this special permit and we can allow a density bonus and we can allow your the zoning dimensions to change. Especially where we're changing the frontage and the size of the lots, we we, I think we need a little bit of over. You know, we need to review it.
I mean, I think what what, if I understand correctly, the point of this a little bit, Lori, is that if you say that, you know, you have a inclusionary law that says if you build ten units, then somebody and you, one of them has to be affordable, then somebody might say, well, I'm only gonna build nine. And this gives them that little bit of incentive to say, well, you know, if you actually do build ten, we're gonna allow this. So I do think that there's a give and take there. Um, and I honestly, I think it's worth considering.
I think, you know, the other thing they remember is that, you know, we could say no, right? And and the developer is going to be thinking about that.
Yes, cause it does say.
For a special permit and we say no, now the whole project is not feasible.
No, only that part of the project is unfeasible. They still have to do the affordable part.
Yeah. So what it says is that the special uh, the permit granting authority may allow a reduction in the density and dimensional requirements.
Right.
So I would just delete by special permit. So even if it was um not by special permit, the planning board still has the discretion to allow it or not.
And if they do a special permit, do they, is there a charge? Like, do they have to pay for that?
They would.
So again, if we're trying to provide a carrot here, there's your carrot, right? We still may allow it, but at least they don't have to pay for the special permit.
Then can we just waive the special permit? Permit, waive that fee.
Yeah, we could waive that fee and it could even be in here. But I think if we're one of the only towns allowing these density bonuses, I think we do a special permit.
Well, remember that they pay the fee when they file the application. So that's a full month before the public hearing starts.
Hmm.
So that money's already been deposited into the general fund at that point.
But can there be like in the fee list? Can there be a little like footnote that says um special permits for density bonuses for the affordable housing? You know, not
waived.
You don't have to pay it. It's waived. Just have it listed right on the fee regulation sheet.
But then what happens if we don't approve it? Do they have to then pay it later?
No.
No, cause they didn't get it.
But they still went through the special permit process.
But we waived it.
And it's more than they're getting in other towns.
Yep.
Again, I I just I just wanna make sure that, you know, if if we're putting a carrot out there, that we're putting a carrot out there and not just that, you know? Yeah, we're putting a carrot out there, but not really.
Well, I think a density bonus offering it is a pretty good carrot. Uh, I think.
If we're gonna waive the fee and it just, we get the chance to do a closer view of it. I mean, and even like Millie says, to her point, if it's if in a couple of years, we don't, if we even see any of these or if we see them and they go well and we don't feel like it's necessary, we can always reverse it. So I don't see why we need to leave ourselves exposed.
Right. Oops.
Okay, so you wanna leave that in?
I, when I called, I called the woman in Midway when I was reading theirs and I, they have a density bonus. And she said, even though they have it listed in there, no one's ever gone for it because they just wanna do the housing and they don't even care. She said they've never gone for it. She doesn't know why, but they just take the easiest route and build the ten with the two affordable and I don't know. But I don't think it has to do with, you know, it had nothing to do with because of the special permit or any of that. She just said they're just haven't, hasn't been an interest. Cause they're such small projects.
Yeah.
We had a couple of projects a long time ago where they had to do, we used to have an inclusionary zoning by law before my day and they had to do a couple and there were no, there were no bonuses then.
Yeah.
I feel like here we're giving a bonus at least.
And I thi- I think that's a a nice consideration.
Mm hmm.
Okay, that is the last change uh that he recommended, other than, you know, changing the name of the permit granting authority.
So I wanted to go back to C for a second. You go back to C. I was wondering if we could ask Attorney Aikman, like we listed out the districts and I know I'd said this before, but I feel like it should say the inclusionary zoning provisions of this section should apply to any project. Like, I still don't see why we're calling out specific districts. Like when we had Avalon and I know it was a forty B, but if it wasn't, it was in the highway district or the industrial district. I feel like by listing specific districts, we might miss one. If somebody goes for a use variance in industrial or in highway, we're not gonna catch it.
Only districts that allow residential uses.
Yeah.
So if if they're going to ask for a variance to do housing, then that's a comprehensive permit. And in the case of a comprehensive permit, then it would be twenty or twenty-five percent of the units, not fifteen percent. So we would get more of a bonus by doing a comprehensive permit in those districts than we would by doing inclusionary zoning. So I wouldn't recommend uh doing inclusionary zoning in those districts. Uh, I would, if I sat down with a developer who was interested in doing a housing project in the industrial district, I would tell them the only way you can do that is through chapter forty B. So if it's an ownership project, it's twenty percent of the units have to be affordable. If it's a rental property, property is twenty-five percent. But remember, then all of the units count. So even though only twenty-five percent of the units are affordable, we get credit for a hundred percent of the units. So by allowing a variance to do an inclusionary zoning provision, the town will lose out big time.
I was just thinking back to the baseball fields. When they came up, they were offering like ten percent affordable, maybe twelve. And they were in a section of town that didn't allow housing. And we never said to them, well, what if you offer twenty-five percent, you know, when we were in talks with them?
But that's, so you guys didn't wanna rezone their property. You didn't wanna put it in the MBTA. So if they were to come to me tomorrow, I would tell them the only way you can do it is under a comprehensive permit. And then the town will get way more bang for the affordable housing buck by doing the comprehensive permit instead of uh this.
Mm hmm.
I just wanna make sure we catch it. Cause when thinking back to the baseball, you know, they weren't offering that much as much affordable housing.
They were trying to encourage you to include them in the MBTA district, which you folks elected not to do.
Right. Yeah. I just don't want something to fall through the cracks. That's all.
Okay.
So like Lori said, that covers all the zoning bylaws. Does anybody else have any additional questions, comments?
Oh, see.
Uh, Amy, before we move on, I just wanna let you guys know I have to uh jump off in like five, 10 minutes. My wife is working late and I need to pick up my kid from baseball.
Okay.
But I just wanna be on to make sure we get through the bylaws, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So nobody else has any questions? Or additions? I think we should leave it open because Lori still has to hear back from Attorney Aikman. And you know, there is actually a webinar on March eleventh that can forward everybody a link and um the state is holding a webinar with the latest updates on the ADU by law and.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah, please do.
Tuesday.
Okay. All right.
So our next meeting, of course, is March eighteenth. We do have uh the reservoir common driveway on at six o'clock. Um, but I know they asked for a continuance from the Conservation Commission. He has not asked for for a continuance from me. But maybe it would be uh prudent to um schedule the continuance of the public hearing for the same time. So there won't be like a lag in the agenda if we do ask for a continuance.
Sounds good. Actually, I'll ask too, if there are any public comments. I do see there's one person uh in the audience. If they had any questions, you could raise your hand. No, I don't see any public comments. Right. So then do I have a motion to continue the zoning by law public hearing till six o'clock on March eighteenth?
I moved.
Second or a second? Okay, roll call vote. Brad, Brad Lynchette.
Aye.
Anthony Zeiten.
Aye.
Bill Pierce.
Aye.
Millie Milton.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So that is continued to the eighteenth. Um, next on our agenda, there was a housing production plan or master plan implementation committee sent out um a letter about housing.
Mm hmm.
I can pull it up. Let's see. Just wanna have it on my screen. Okay, can I see?
Mm hmm.
So, um I could read the letter into the record or did everybody have a chance to read it?
Yep, I got it.
Okay, so this is a letter that came out from the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Um Rick Leaf had written a letter and brought it forward to the Master Plan Implementation Committee um to send to us as a planning board. He wanted to talk about going forward with the housing section of the master plan. And he specifically was calling out the housing production plan and the different goals, H one, three, H two, one, H two, four, H two dash six and three dash one. So Rick had sent this out to our board and he said, you know, he wanted to call attention to these items and it's up to the board which ones we wanna go forward with. Or if we wanna say to that implement, master plan implementation committee that yes, we got this, but we're really busy this year, so we'll think about it next year. It was really just a trigger. These are some of the housing goals that are in the master plan. Also attached to the memo is a copy of the master plan housing chapter for the review. Um, but my copy of this email didn't have that chapter attached.
Yeah, I don't think mine did either.
Not sure if anyone had a chance to review it, but I was thinking for the next meeting, if people wanted to review the master plan housing chapter or if has anyone read the two thousand and twelve housing plan?
Mm hmm.
We should review both of those before deciding what we're gonna go forward with. But it's really a, an email to the planning board to consider looking into different housing aspects that are listed in the master plan. I know when um Rick first started talking about this at the um MPIC, I had questions for him about the housing options for seniors. That's the first one. So I actually had a discussion with Rick about an hour long discussion and I took notes. And um I um sent the notes to Rick so he could verify it for accuracy. Because I didn't know a lot about housing and Rick has always been the person in charge of housing in town. He seems to be the one that brings those items forward at town meeting. So I had specific questions. And I thought I would share those with the board too, because you guys might have the same And I thought I would share those with the board too because you guys might have the same. Questions that I did. And I also reached out to Fran Baxter because she is um. She is the rep for Council of Aging. Because what I hear when I talk to seniors in my neighborhood and my parents and their friends. I ask them. Are you looking for a housing option? You know, there are seniors moving out of my neighborhood. And I actually have asked them why they're moving. Is it because there are no options in Northborough? And the answers I was getting is that the seniors would rather. Retire in place, they'd rather have lower taxes, but the housing for the seniors like. Wasn't high on their list because it's more expensive to move out of your house and pay rent if you already own your house outright. And Rick and Fran actually agreed with that. But um I do have it all written down in notes and Rick and. Fran both gave me approval to share it with the board.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so that was one of the goals, housing options for seniors, and I just wanted to get more information on it. Um, I do think, in my opinion, I would like to find out the impacts on town services and infrastructure related to housing. I think that would be really interesting. To find out. I'm not sure Lori, what that would be, would that be like a consultant?
Um, I know back in the nineties and in the late eighties, there were a number of cost of community services. Studies that were done. Across um Massachusetts and various other communities through the country. Um, those, I haven't seen any recent. Uh, cost of community services studies. Done. One of the things that they found out. Is that single family homes tended to be a net drain on municipal. Services, uh, you know, of course, I'm sure you've heard uh the cost of education and. Of course, uh, the services associated with fire and police. Um, as opposed to commercial industrial, which tend to pay more in taxes than they consume in services. Um, and then there was different types of housing. I I can look to see if I can find something, but in order to. Have something like that done for our community, uh, I would recommend hiring a consultant. Based on my lack of ability to. Spend even a full day on updating the um subdivision rules and regs. I don't think that I'd really at the time that did vote to it, unfortunately.
Or is that something that CMRPC could do?
It could. And in fact, I did uh reach out to them a while ago. To see what they would charge to update the housing production plan. And I'm sure I have their scope of work, I think it was twenty-five thousand dollars, but. I will uh spend a minute. Uh, if if you'd like. And I can um. See if I can find that. Or I could just email it to you after the meeting, that might be a little bit more time.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay, I'll do that.
That's a good point, though.
With this letter, nothing is a rush, you know, it's good that they threw it out there, but it's not, nothing that we have to decide tonight. These are just pointing out the goals that as a planning board. We can consider. And I think we have, and I said this in the Master Plan Committee, I think the planning board has done. A great job in the past year, I mean, there have been a lot of new mandates by the state with the MBTA and we got that approved at town meeting. Then we have the ADU by law, we've been working on that and that should go forth at this town meeting. We're working on inclusionary zoning and as part of inclusionary zoning, there was even. Something that included housing for people with disabilities. We said if they're over thirty units to include some for disabilities. So I really feel like. You know, we are cognizant and we're really, you know, thinking about. Affordability and disabilities. And um. What Rick and I discussed and others have discussed, you know, it's not just a Northborough problem, it's pretty much a state problem and. A countrywide problem. Even other countries, I just go back. From um Ireland last night, but I had a newspaper in the morning, I was reading at breakfast. And it was like solving Ireland Dublin's housing crisis. I felt like I was back in Northford.
Everywhere.
Like different countries, same problem. So.
Do we, do we have a standard definition for seniors that, you know, and. To your point, Amy, what they're looking for or what? To, you know, to get them to stay in our town. How does that work? If you have a married couple and one's a senior and one's not, or, you know, does that make it work? It just, don't exactly what that. Entails.
The state does uh define it. Based on um specific, uh, specific types of housing. Um, so it's generally considered fifty-five and over. Or sixty-two. Years of age and older. So then it's usually one spouse has to be. At least that age. And then it it does allow you to have one underaged.
The main point is to be affordable. And. Uh, have accessibility needs or.
So that's not necessarily. So, uh, that's just, uh, if you're, if you're gonna call housing senior, it doesn't necessarily have to be affordable.
Okay.
So it could be luxury housing for seniors. Affordable has to do with, uh, so. HUD. Defines affordability. So if you look at the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Um, they have affordable housing standards.
Right.
For different size households. So it's based on the number of people in the household.
Yeah.
And it's based on where you live, so like uh Northborough is in Worcester County and I believe they're like. They they split up Worcester County into, I think, three different categories.
Right, right.
Uh, but I'd be happy to email that out to you folks if if you're interested.
I mean, I I kind of understood that part, I didn't necessarily, you know, Amy had brought up that. The reason they want, are moving out is cuz they can't afford to stay in their house. But. Maybe their house is. You know, it's costly to heat or something that. That I was just trying to figure out if there's an overlap between senior housing affordability and accessible housing.
So if you look at the housing production plan from two thousand and twelve. Um, it spends a lot of time talking about housing affordability. I think it really depends upon, you know, the circumstance of a particular senior couple.
Yeah.
Oh, if they're very, very wealthy, then they probably don't care about the the cost of heating. If they're middle class, they may feel a little bit more. If they're low income, then they definitely care about it. So it did, it does talk about um. The the housing burden, the cost burden. Um, so it. What's generally considered as affordable is that you're spending. No more than thirty percent of your annual income on. Rent and uh, you know, utilities and the like. Um, so if you are spending more than that on rent or mortgage. Then you are considered housing burdened. So it goes all into that, so I recommend the housing production plan was well written, in my opinion. Got a lot of great information in it. And I think it it really helps uh explain the situation.
Well, we have, in this town, we have uh tax breaks for property taxes for seniors, right?
Um, I I don't know the particulars, I know there's the senior work off program. But that only applies to to low income seniors.
Okay, okay. Alright.
A lot of the seniors leaving my neighborhood, I questioned why they were leaving. We've had a turnover. And um they're mostly just moving to go closer to their grandkids. Like, they weren't leaving because they wanted housing options, they were leaving because. Yeah, there were so many different reasons, but I know Rick had a meeting up at the senior center a couple of years ago. And he even said the seniors he talked to there also were not looking for housing options. And that's why I called them because like the number H one three, it says housing options for seniors. And I haven't heard, at least in my small group that I keep asking. None of them have been looking for housing options, so I asked him what he heard. And he actually said he heard the same thing.
Okay.
That this seniors they talked to weren't looking. To move. So. But I'll, I'll forward you that.
I mean, it came up as one of the pretty high up goals, so I was kind of asking, really, what is that? What does that mean? What does that look like for the town?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that also, uh, if you were to do a a survey. That targets uh the senior population, you know, all different people. Then uh. You you may get quite a variety of responses.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
So I think for the next meeting, we could um send out a copy of the master plan or if anybody, do you really need a copy of the section or does everybody know how to get it online?
So I did notice uh that the link for the master plan is broken, so it doesn't work. So unfortunately, um, Michelle has been out sick for a couple of weeks now. So I did. Uh, ask her to, she does all of our web work.
Yeah.
So I did ask her to uh fix the link. And so when she comes back into the office, I'm sure she'll be able to do that. Uh, in the meantime, I can certainly scan the housing chapter and send that over to you folks. Um, and I can also uh send out that two thousand and twelve housing production plan.
Yeah, you broke a little for me, but I don't think you have to scan it for us. I think, at least in my opinion, we can wait till Michelle's back to get the link.
Okay.
Because you have so much on your plate right now, I hate to have you have to scan. The master plan since it's already online. But maybe when um she comes back, you can just send us the link for that section and um. The two thousand and twelve housing production plan.
I'll do.
That'd be great. Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to the next section of our agenda. Are there any A and R's lock releases or bonds?
None.
Um, any subcommittee updates?
No, nope, not for me.
Nope.
Hey, so the next planning board meeting is March eighteenth. And ZBA meeting is March twenty-fifth. And NPIC is March twenty.
I haven't received any applications for the ZBA meeting, so it's possible that that meeting will be canceled.
Okay. Right, and NPIC will be March twentieth. Anyone else have anything? To discuss tonight?
Nope, no.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Roll call vote, um, Millie Milton?
Here, um, yes.
Bill Pierce.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. See you guys on the eighteenth.
Good night, everybody.
Take care, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, thanks, Amy.
Bye.
Bye.